We're very recording.
Yep.
From all the order, the May sixteen school board meeting. We don't have a quality tonight, so. Um, it is the mission of Soul Free Education to engage every student an opportunity to learn and be able to grow. Christian, what's your role?
Wolf.
Here.
Rock Holt.
Here.
Haleska.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Student rep Free Henning. Uh, Coons not here, but is on his way.
Welcome everybody, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see now here public comment and that's one of our thankful situation public comment. Uh, so originally with you, uh, Davis.
Yeah, just want to acknowledge we've got, we've had a great participation in extracurriculars this this spring. We've got um a loaded boys and girls team at the state right now and track representing us. Um, boys, I think in every event, but maybe two and the girls in every event, but I believe four. So while represented our girls golf team um made it to state for the second year in a row. And we had individual on the boys team qualify for state, so. And uh, I believe our girl beat uh Regina at nine soccer two to one, so.
And that will be fun.
All right.
Graduation Sunday.
Congratulations on Sunday.
Biggest class yet or one of the biggest classes yet. We've had to graduate. Uh, what time is it? Five thirty-two Coons arrives.
What is the moment?
One forty-two, I believe.
I thought it was one minute.
One thirty-two.
Biggest class since probably fourteen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, my family people were in the two thousand fourteen class.
One forty-nine.
Forty-nine. You would know that because your son was in it as.
Correct. That was a big cloud.
That's what stressed.
Yeah.
All the classics of all the.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. You all welcome to graduation. She can be outside.
Yep. Two block starts.
Two block starts. And this is gonna keep the rain away. The big translators are sitting on the sidelines and they start to.
Right.
I think that's for Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
There's some, I think, um this middle school traffic, you know, things like that. That's true, sir. Stuff like that. Mike, is that right? In a man.
The media is full of insane.
Okay. I was talking football, which he told me what day it was because he, he's very volatile to exactly what that's going on. Um. Focus on learning. Teach to heal.
Yeah, so uh, just a kind of a review update. We had uh this year Danielle Tice, I've talked to her about her before. She's the founder of Teach to Heal framework and some of the work that we've done last year. We started last twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We had Danielle. We actually sent a few folks out to Des Moines to learn a little bit and get trained on that framework and some of the pieces that go with that. And then um she had come to the district to observe in Lakeview and SAS last year, and then we kind of kicked some things off with some foundational learning uh by her or from her last year and um had conversation this year about learning it, you know, how do we structure our learning environment to best support all of our students? Taking a look at roles and responsibilities of the adults in each building. Um, talking about basically some culture things. She titles it under current and then the language that we use um as we're talking about students and, you know, really challenging some of the, the language that we potentially use with um with and about students and among staff. And then she also helped us kind of get things kicked off with the behavior interventionist role at Lakeview and, and SAS, which has been I'd say a resounding success in our ability to support students who may become dysregulated. Um, and then uh this summer, um Mrs. Holtz and Mrs. Westland and the two behavior interventionists are going to attend some kind of review training um of the interventions that, that we utilize with kids. And then next year, Lakeview and um SAS, the next level of work will be around learning about the skills that we need to be teaching kids um in regards to self-regulation and some of those and it'll, it really lines well with some of our character strong work that we're doing across the district. And then this uh then we're also launching more work at the middle school to start to expand the Teach to Heal uh work up into the middle school. And so in April, um the, she was here to do some uh work around foundational uh learning for, for the middle school. And then this week she was back in buildings observing. Uh, she worked with uh Joelyne Kennedy uh behavior, behavior interventionist at Lakeview and then did a lot of uh observation um at the middle school as well as doing some planning and preparing for next year for middle school. Mike, any comments about some of the conversation from this week or highlights?
Um, which we did conversation um. Danielle had toured, actually toured every classroom earlier in the year, so this was more of a conversation with myself and her coaches. Finding personal development and uh getting impulse for where we're at in preparation with one, so. Really, she's only with us for the morning, but really beneficial time.
So the goal for next year is now to start moving this work up in the middle school and now start to experience the same professional development, learning that Lakeview and SAS did um last year and this year. So we're excited to have her back. She's a positive. She in fact, uh, she just loves our community. They're actually, her and her husband were looking at uh seeing if they could purchase a house or a condo because it's such a central hub and her business is expanding and expanding, the work that she's doing. She's doing some work with college community, Davenport Schools. Uh, I think East Marshall was one.
Knoxville, Levee County.
Yep, that Davis County, uh Van Buren. Um, I think have in conversation also with Cedar Rapids School. So she's living for a little hub spot where she can, instead of driving four and a half to five hours up to Minnesota.
I think there was someone that.
I, yeah, I know. She, she started, she, they already contacted a, a realtor, so um but they, they were here on Monday and just were driving around checking the place out, so. Um, everybody keeps telling her, you should really look at Solon if you want to move somewhere. So it, it says a lot about our community.
Do you have any um goals that we can measure progress that bringing this program and move from point A to point B?
Uh, yeah, we're in conversation. Actually, um, Mrs. Holtz, we've been, we were digging into a little bit of her data. Um we'll have probably a better idea of kind of our baseline data, especially with the behavior, behavior interventionist. I think that's the piece that we want to know. If that really truly has having an impact. I think some of the data that um Mrs. Holtz has provided really shows there is an impact and the work that, that they're doing. Um, I think as we look at setting some goals, it'll probably be around um some of the work that we do with Character Strong a little bit and measuring um kind of tier two supports in regards to where stu-, how students are responding to interventions, those types of things. So there's still some work to be done there and especially as we bring middle school onboard. I think it'll be really important that we set some specific goals. Uh, this year has been kind of a um a baseline for, for us, so we look more at that to be forward.
If I can, I just have to give a shout out to Sean Schen, because she's been on the air, she's been awesome and effective, so it's not really me, it's Sean, so.
Any other questions? Any none? Admiral reports, you need school spring field trip.
Yeah, so if you currently, SAS has been outside a lot this week, including in the rain on Tuesday, so Danielle didn't come to SAS on Tuesday because there were literally no, no kids in the building on Tuesday. So um, both the fourth graders and the fifth graders have had some really unique opportunities this week to get outside um and do a lot of hands-on learning that's also to go to literacy, mathematics, like the whole works. So um, just put together a little slideshow for you just so you can kind of see some of the things that they're doing. The fourth graders wouldn't mind to advance the slide next to me. Um, the fourth graders partnered up with Mrs. Sutton, um, that our librarian and then Mrs. Posen County and Miss Hatcher up at the high school. Mrs. Posen County teaches a class called Outdoor Sciences and um, in library, students have read a book called Village. We have not read the book, but it really is about how nature can teach us so many different things and what you can learn through observation and interaction with nature. Um, and so looking at that outdoor sciences class and then having heard about the book from March up at the high school, um, Miss Posen County and her students and Miss Hatcher and her students started really thinking about how can we bring this to life for some of our students? And so um, as part of uh the high school class, they started thinking about how can we teach kids about these um various aspects. Some of it was just microorganisms and observing them and how the food web works and um birds and their nesting and um just digging in the dirt to discover, um, like I put out there, the experiment caught animals find food. Um, and you know, why claws are made the way they are, things like that about animals and such. Um, they did some leaf rubbings, they did some journaling and some observations and comparing. Um, I'm gonna kind of flip through a few of those pictures there, Josh. Um, the high schoolers were in charge of the groups. There were plenty of adults around, high school teachers and um elementary or intermediate teachers as well. Um, but you can just see, you know, they were working with compasses and reading those and um, the digging in the dirt over there on the blue tart there, just trying to see what, what things might you find in the dirt, what other bugs might be not even recognized. Um, just a lot of outdoor learning that day. They were catching some things, frogs and such from the pond out there at the S R and A. And then the fifth graders, so that was just a day of outdoor learning. Unfortunately, it's a rainy day, but it made it work. Um, but fifth graders are outside all week this week, save for today because it was a shortened day. Um, and teachers, we started this last year and carried it through to this year because it was such a powerful week of learning for kids. Um, but we work with the University of Iowa, Scroll the Wild, um Phoebe Getley. Last year it was Jay Gorsch, Jay's kind of oversight overseeing Phoebe. Um, and then Phoebe's helping our fifth grade team develop lessons and work with kids out in the wild. So they go to Palisades Park, they go to Lake McBride Park, various areas are to place called Spider Pond, um that has like ropes and things like that across it so you can um traverse across the pond and um they'll like get even in the water. So um kids are doing all kinds of things. Teachers, one thing that I said to them was if we're going to go outside for learning, we really need to be thinking about how does this tie to all the skills we're looking at in reading, writing, math, et cetera. Um, and I asked some of the fifth graders at lunch today when I was in the lunchroom. If there was any one thing you wanted me to tell the board tonight, because I'm telling them about School of Wild, what would you want them to know? Um, and a couple of kids said how much math and reading and writing we're doing, uh, which I was like, I'm absolutely telling them that because they're doing a lot of it. Um, but then also they're really absorbing so much of just how animals interact in nature and how careers and things like that can come about within the natural world. So um, that was really cool to hear from them. You can just see some of the activities that they're doing, images and things. Um, they're, they're studying microinver- invergrits and um, they did some trinity, I think is what it's called. They, so they tested the water pollution um to the ingredients. I can't remember the word. It's on the, the previous screen. Anyway, they had to do some calculations to figure out um what's in the water, is the water uh clean or more polluted? Um, and that even if the water is clean, this is what one of them told me at lunch, even if the water is clean, there may still be things in the water that are harmful to humans. So beware if you're out there. And we, we played McBride as your first one, you knew I needed to tell you that too. Um, so there's just some different things. They did bird banding, you can see in the middle picture there. I absolutely love that photo because that, you know, is, he's just fun, but um he's holding a bird in his hand. After they had like done some bird banding and then they'll track him and see where they're going and um kind of interact with it that way too. So um, they've encountered snakes and they've encountered ticks and figuring out how to take care of that for themselves too. But literally just getting in the water and, you know, figuring out what all is there, but ecosystems are there, so. Um, it's the one thing we're, I think all third are like one, kids come home exhausted, but two, they can't get enough stories for the kids, so it's really fun. Teachers are working really hard in preparing all of this. They go out there with a notebook that has facilitated and put together with um just different journal prompts and things like that that they make work on. They do some major poetry while they're out there as well. Um, and just, it's really cool week of learning, so it's really looking forward to it. I'm gonna start by myself. I think. We'll see.
It's kind of nice when you get all the silverware and it's not just the silverware, right? I mean, our heart.
Yeah.
Your part. Policy is up to the road.
Joy is a limited soul.
You guys, just saying a little, we used to do this and we took a pause on it.
Good, good.
I think that was one two times across the board, cut. I don't think.
It's not possible.
It's decided. Yeah, we even.
Yeah, been a while.
Been a while. I think, I think that's when you know, we can't put off the others well to finish off the one year and then we can back out of this and hold.
Well, I was in high school, we're in middle school. We do this program over by Guthrie Center.
Okay.
It was like an old, I think, one or two nights. But it's good. I can do some really cool stuff like water bottle and you're outside all day. So it's definitely one of those things that sticks out for these kids. It was like talking about role, so.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, that'll be camp for a week and that. My own, really?
Yeah, they had cabins and stuff, so.
Yeah, we get to do this third grant, um that the School of the Wild got, that any school could have one grade level up, up through sixth grade. Take part in this, so it doesn't cost us and that grant will keep running. Um, so really it's just the bus expense to get them there.
Well, it's good for the university kind of tech team down with this.
Yeah. Yeah. Really cool.
It's a good, it's a good experience. I think you can finally keep that one. It's valuable. Out, out of the way, it's it's a valuable opportunity and there's not a lot chances for us to get that through the system, so. Uh. Anything else you have any close status? Okay. Uh, board, board committee updates. Uh, David, Adam wants a new chair or he wants his chair. Let's speak to that on the board committee reports and um I think our finance company, something we want to point out, uh, since on the agenda with the contracts is uh, we've, we shot for the three and a half percent of our teachers uh with the other groups. I think the only exception to that really is the administrative directors where uh that was last because we were covering the benefits because we wanted to keep the benefits where we've promised them. We had to balance it off with a smaller uh salary raise this year. So we just wanted that on the record since that's in the uh sub agenda. Anything from the other committees? The names where we at with the anything updates on our it's been all construction.
Assist. The purchase of a house will take place on June twenty-eighth. Um, sis is running. I mean, they've got just a few more panels left and that gym will be, and then they'll start putting the frost beans across. Um. Transportation should, should start some concrete next week. Um.
We know that those are good.
Yeah. They've got a low spot right now that we've got to make an adjustment to and, and then we'll start pouring next week, uh, is what they hope to. And then as mentioned earlier, graduation is let's see, the Wednesday following Memorial Day is when the uh company will come in to replace the turf.
It's gonna pull good time for them.
Yep, yep. Um, and then the, were the poles removed today? No, the poles were, poles at the softball field, the old wood poles were removed today. And I think we're looking at the end of, by the end of next week, that we should have the new ones up. But I don't. Yeah. And then if the, the dugouts are being re-sheeted and one is finished, re-sheeted, repainted. So one is, one is done, so.
It'll be busy someone.
Yes. Uh.
Consent agenda. Anything to get pulled out?
I'll make a motion to approve their consent agenda as presented.
Second, I lost a second vice, Coons approved the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, see if I'm saying hi.
Hi.
Close. Very unanimously. Congratulations on the graduation class of twenty twenty-four. Been approved by the board.
Good, um. What, what was the percentage of graduation rate? Ninety-nine?
There's, there's one.
Close.
That's on the border.
Yeah.
Just one out of it. Yeah, so.
Maybe by tomorrow.
The, the door's not closed. The door's not closed.
Leave it open.
Yeah. Yeah.
Close this side a few.
Yeah.
Well, one fifty-nine.
When the music starts?
Right.
Yeah.
Guys. Uh, action items. First one up is approve the flexible student and student support F three program, calling the PE waiver.
Yeah, so recall the last several years, we've done the PE waiver because um, or it used to be related, I think it was called the whatever exemption, but we called it the PE waiver. And since legislation had changed, I believe a couple of years ago, it's now called the flexible student and school support program or F six, F three, FS three program. Because let's make it more complicated. Um, but as, as we look ahead, um, really in requesting approval of a three-year plan, it used to be you had to do it every year and now within this program, um, we can do one, two or three years, some requesting a three-year plan, which will exempt the district from the chapter twelve PE requirements, which um includes um, every student is supposed to during the school year, uh throughout the year, um, take uh, take physical education course for one eighth unit of physical education semester, which is nine, nine hundred minutes. And for our, for our four by four block, um, we have got many of our kids who accomplish their PE requirement within a semester or within um, I think a skinny at times and were able to meet actually more than the nine hundred minutes a semester typically. Um. But really looking at the FS, this FS three program, we're supposed to identify um, that obviously the exemption for PE, but then determining what evidence-based um practices or innovations, uh ways to enhance student learning, well-being and post-secondary success. Tim and I had a nice conversation this morning and provide me some additional feedback, which was good because it got me unstuck on some of this stuff. Um. And so really what we're trying to get at here is it's not so much about the PE and the physical fitness was what is what we typically had focused on. Whereas it really is focusing on removing the barrier of every kid having to take that PE requirement and then, and, and then implementing a, a program that really benefits kids and their learning, well-being and post-secondary success. So as, as we, as I looked at this and kind of reworked this um today, actually, um, I've established three different goals. The first two goals really are goals that we already have, but really writing them down and being specific about what it is we're trying to accomplish. If we were to remove that requirement, which then provides us more flexibility in our daily schedule for kids, one being um increased students' participation in college academies. Looking at the numbers from this year, we have approximately ten percent of the high school uh students um, four, about forty-five who participated in the academies. So the goal, looking at the goal in terms of increasing that potentially up to fifteen percent um over the next few years, um which would equate to about sixty students approximately. And then goal number two, increase students' participation in insurance, internships, which is another huge goal of ours. Um, and it, and based on the number that was provided today, about, about thirteen percent of our students. Um, and then trying to increase that over the next few years up to twenty percent, so sixty to approximately ninety-two students. Um, and we, we've got some, I believe we have some students participating during the year, but we also have several that are participating out and during the summer months as well. Um, so those really, it really aligns with what we're already doing. So trying not to reinvent the wheel and making sure it aligns with our priorities as a district and not just coming up with something out of the blue um for this. And then um then the third goal really has to do with our typical conversation around physical fitness and well-being. Um. Looking at our numbers in terms of our students who are involved in extracurricular activities, which is anywhere from athletics, basketball, track, cross country to um, uh, the musical band, marching band, those extracurricular activities. Uh, we're, we typically with all those kids and, and Don Fisher does an outstanding job of tracking all that data now, which we didn't have before. Um, but we're always right around that eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight percent mark of our uh total student population at the high school who are participating. And trying to, we continuously are trying to see how can we get more students um really actively involved. Um, and this past year we purchased for the high school PE, well, actually six twelve PE department. The fitness tractors, I think I brought this up a while ago. Um, but this year they're kind of piloted how, how it would work and then next year they're, they're planning, doing some plans of how they can really utilize that within their PE classes. But then we've also had some conversations about those opportunities for kids who remain with independent study for PE because they can't fit it into their schedule and being able to wear a fitness tracker to kind of set some uh fitness targets and then being able to utilize that, that tool. So we're going to kind of dig into that a little bit more next year. Um, and then as part of this uh handout here, I provided some additional numbers for all the participation rates um and activities this, this school year. Any questions?
I would be, what? Somewhere I, what I think I answered.
Yes, please do.
So this is, this is the write-up that we are going to send out to the Department of Education for formally requesting
Yes, and I actually, and so I'll take these chunks and I've got an official form I have to fill out for the Department of Ed that sets the goal. Here are kind of the action steps we're moving forward with.
Yeah.
And then I submit that along with um the board of board.
And then each student still would have to request a, a waiver from us, assuming we can give this exemption. Or is it just, is it a?
No, it's just a, yeah, because, because of how, because of how our schedule, uh, how our schedule is set up.
And this, this is not excuse individual students. This, this excuses the district for ensuring that every student.
Ensuring that it's, okay, that's normal. And then have we, have we done this before?
Yes.
Yeah. Every year.
Except, I think the big, the big, the big issue is that in the past, we had to say for various reasons, we can't do this and we want to, we want a waiver.
Right.
And we're going to certify that every student, what's should make the reason, it's taken out the thing where the district is responsible for saying that we will guarantee that every student gets the requisite number of minutes, regardless of whether or not they're enrolled in PE, which is the thing we always struggle with is how do we know that every student's doing that? And so we struggle with that a lot. And so this new one switches it, Josh, you can correct me to being more educationally focused, is there an educational benefit to not having to require every student to take PE every day all throughout the year?
So, so we're saying instead, we're saying like the, our top two goals are really uh academic focus and looking at, hey, we want our kids to have that flexibility to be able to take academy courses, to be able to participate in internships or apprenticeships like Bree is to ensure there's that flexibility in their schedule so that um, and i- in this case, the PE kind of gets in the way if we say, nope, every kid has to take it all year long. There's no, no exceptions, so sorry. Unless you have some of, unless you have an individual student who says, I can't fit it in my schedule, so then you get like one quarter off or something like that.
I, I was just trying to clarify what, who is the audience and such.
Yeah, it's, it's really for the district.
That's, it's a very good question, Josh, and I talked to him, who is the audience? Because in the past, it's like, they want me to submit this, but they're when Josh asked the guidance, what are you looking for? You're like, well, just submit it.
Sorry.
It's almost like you send it in and nobody's reading it.
But, because I, I, I've called the DE before and said, hey, who else is doing, like, who else has to do this and who, and how are they doing? I, I didn't get it. I didn't really get an answer. They're like, well, nobody really submits it. You guys are, like, I felt like you're like on an island, so. But try to follow the rules and be compliant, so.
So this, this is my fifty thousand foot view. Okay. I think it's at least time to consider with all these different things we're doing, with four block system is best for kids. Do you know what I mean? Like, like, are we, because I mean, you can have a certain, I mean, we're trying to work a bunch of stuff with you. Right? We're trying to work internships and we're trying to work all these things and, and, and so are we at a place where we're starting to outgrow this four block system? You know, I mean, and I'm not sure if it is or if it isn't, right? But I think it's something that at least needs to be entered. You know what I mean? And I'm not sure if it is or if it isn't, right? But I think it's something that at least needs to be entertained a little bit. To look at options for kids to take more classes. Um, if we're gonna stress academics, um, you know, and, and we're just in more opportunities for kids. You know, there's a lot of miles in classes I actually taught, you know what I mean? And we kind of get locked into. Oh, we can only take this certain amount of class this year, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not saying that to change it, but is it something that we?
In the future.
Right, exactly. And then if you have more skinnies, then some of these things become less difficult to fit in. Because the bottom line, when you're sixty, seventy years old, the deposits you made in physical education. And fitness throughout your life are going to far outweigh some of these things, you know what I mean? And so I just, my mom was PE teacher, you know, I think I just don't want us to go away from some of these things. And I think there's ways we can still provide kids with opportunities, but we get locked into a four block schedule, those opportunities shrink. So when you have, what are you looking at, right?
Um, that we.
P for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so I know some of that stuff happens different now, maybe the trackables work, you know what I mean? But it's just, the trackables aren't really about physical activity. Right, for sure, from the last round of waivers, which. Right. They're in front of us, you're gonna have a better way of measuring it, so. Right, so, I mean, it's just a, because we are grown, we're writing internships, we're, you know, I mean, and, and could kids still take more classes and still be the internship? You know, and, you know, it's just, we're starting to grow in a way that we haven't grown in four with kids leaving someone to go do other things.
Well, no, with E F A and all the.
Right. Exactly.
So this is be, to be submitted every year, we have to submit.
Well, this, this one, they're, they're giving us permission to say a one, a two or a three year.
Okay, so we're, we're going for three year.
Yeah, my thought, my thought process around the three year would really allow us an opportunity to kind of, to really look at our numbers and give us an opportunity to really use. Yeah, and evaluate. Um, now let's not to say, you know, each year, if you're, if you were interested, it could bring back some information or report on kind of where we are to, um, to some of the.
So this seems applicable for this coming academic year, and if we change, to Dan's point, to change the four by four schedule. Then I'm assuming we have to go back and revisit this waiver because this was the, this is our rationale as to why we need the waiver.
Yeah.
And if the four by four goes away.
And it's, and it's because we're not able to do the nine hundred minutes per semester.
Right, and I, I mean, I don't know a lot of this, I, but I like where Dan's headed in that process.
Well, and how many high schools do our teachers have a planned period in a single whole period?
I've heard about a lot of these.
So every, every, every teacher has an eighty four minute prep. That's a long time. That's not with students. You know, I mean, and just, I'm doing the, I'm doing the math in my head, right? A lot. If I remember correctly from some of the, they were short on subs, some of them are. Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're telling them to.
I know some departments need it a lot more than other places, the people in the math department, they need the eighty four minutes for their prep. Otherwise they wouldn't really survive the creating everything. And I'll be spoiled by.
Well, then in, and to your point, I think they're, I mean, we saw the proposal and I think they're probably through with the E L A and math department to consider. At least the E L A is to consider. English ten being shortened and allowing for additional skinny somewhere.
Yeah, right, so I mean, we're, we're not there yet, I'm not trying to blow up a system, but I think it could be something, yeah, just. Which, should we look at this? I think we should probably look at it in, look at the different changes we're making with internships and. Whether, to your point, what English is doing and, and all of those situations, and I don't want to tax our, our teachers anymore. But to your point, not having subs, we should not be relying on our own teachers to, you know, I mean, so, well, the other things to look at, but just.
I, I know there are a lot of students. That have to choose between one or the other because of the four, four block schedule. They can't do all the things they want to do, they have to pick one or the other, and that just kind of stays, or that is so, I.
Look at it.
Yeah.
Continue to challenge people who want to get fine arts. The impact of that on, on I S B schedule, if you're in music or anything, yeah.
Like, you know, if you're in, at the elbow change, you'll ever get a zero block, and then if you're in standard choir, you don't really get a first block either. As this stands up, is this affecting any of the currently present, like, I know there's an academic waiver, it's like five, ten, no, it doesn't affect any.
That's all, that's all still in place, so like.
So like right now, three, four, you don't need to be in a.
So we, if you look, look down on the second page or backside. It actually gives you the, the scripter of what is still available, so that kind of helps answer your question.
And I think directly to your point, if, if this waiver is not in place, some students are required to take PE. Hearing in either the first and second quarter, and then again, third or fourth quarter. So you would have to have two quarters of eighty four minutes PE a year instead of.
Two to sixteen blocks, right?
Yeah, two to sixteen.
Right.
It has been, they have to run it through one of the halls.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like, great, so I'll just say it out loud for, for everyone here, so student is seeks. Um, you can be excused from PE requirement, um, shall be if one student is seeking relief to be able to enroll in academic courses otherwise not available. Student is enrolled in work-based learning or other educational program requiring them, and this would re, this would require you to request, basically is what happens each individual student. And then the third one, which is what was uh, put in place after last legislative session, was the student is in a school-sponsored activity. Which could be um, ath- athletics or marching band, that requires at least as much physical activity per week as the one. So that's still in place, so like if we didn't do the waiver piece, um, individual students would have to request. And then that just becomes a nightmare.
Software, because I believe that semester classes the entire year.
Definitely.
Any additional questions? I would give motion approve of flexible student and support, school support, FS three program, uh, as presented, these readers. So that's, motion by Losco second by Wolf, any additional discussion? Hearing done, all those are embarrassing enough, how did I say that?
I.
Close, motion thirty nine, listen.
Josh, does this SF the number three behind it mean three year program, or do I need to specifically put out, write out three years?
It just means student school support.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I originally wrote those.
Yeah, okay, I just don't know how to word it.
Sure.
For three years.
Save the one money out.
Okay.
F S S S.
So one more thing.
Um, second reading of board policy five oh one. Point zero three compulsory attendance and the seven eleven ten school bus. Uh, passenger restraints. These are updates from the states that we are implementing, we've looked at them, we've read them, we've approved them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any further discussion or questions on them? And now I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve the compulsory attendance and school bus passenger restraint, secondary. Motion by Truance.
Second.
Second by Wolf, any further discussion? Hearing not all, is it, how did I say that? I, close. Yes. Scripting of board policies, may miscellaneous policies.
Oops. Go, one up.
There's a number of policies in there.
Mm-hmm.
For first reading that we've updated either due to legislation.
Mm-hmm.
On I S B recommendations or practices, for example, there's a payroll period. Um, two years ago, we, we used to pay teachers. Uh, in June, for June, July and August. And we've moved to twelve equal installments, so they pay um, June, July, August check, so. You know, there, there's something that we just fixed our practice in board policy. Um, as an example, um, anything that, as you look at those, anything in red or a, a different color than black would be any changes that we made. So you've got pay periods, deductions in pay, things like that.
Why did they um, push like on rental fees and stuff?
For which one?
For um, local federal miscellaneous revenue, so they're talking about the rental fees for school district. Equipment, facilities.
That goes to the general fund?
Or right now can go other places too, right?
That.
Percentage, did I read that wrong?
On seven?
Yeah, proceeds from the sale of.
Let me find it.
Scroll down to seven oh four point one oh one, Josh, just third or fourth, kick one. Uh.
It's board of directors we elect to deposit proceeds from the sale of property or buildings into any fund under the control of the school coverage.
Mm-hmm.
That's an update from I S B, that's a legislation, because before it always would go to the general fund, yes, yes.
So, but that would be something we as the board would.
Only the board can decide, yes, yes. Otherwise it defaults to the general fund.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the only C. Scroll down to.
The school district facilities regulations seems.
Which?
All of that is new? It's on towards the end.
It'll be down there, yeah. Well, I think that's something. It has a legal update from I S B, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
There it is.
Fun.
Um, yeah.
And then it.
Oh, okay, so, yes, w- we have, that's with rentals and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay, so. That, yes, that's basically, um, we had in our policy for our rentals. Basically just a small little paragraph of three or four sentences. So we looked at several other districts to make sure we are protecting ourselves when we rent out our facilities, and we. Made it more detailed and tried to, to try to um, address every, every scenario. Um, that would protect us with a group renting our facilities or giving those, those organizations guidelines. If you're gonna rent our facilities, these are the restrictions, these are the guidelines, so we spelled it out much, in much more detail than our original policy, that's why almost the whole thing's red.
And this is, this is actually, this is actually all of ours, this is the regulations, not the patch of policies, this is.
Red.
The policy stays the same, it's the implementation regulations.
Thank you for the clarification behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause five oh one, five oh one dot one, and the R one indicates it's regulatory.
That makes sense, Cassie.
Yeah.
That's just how we implement our board policy, there's a guideline.
I just feel a lot, I the.
Yeah, it's all there.
Restrictions about what can it kind of be done. Towards the end, where no slam dunking, and no pushing, and all the, no moving of bleachers or setting up anything, unless you're a district employee.
And when we rent our facilities, that stuff is on our rental agreement, like, hey, I need bleachers out, I need this, I need that, our custodians take care of all that. That way there's no breakage, that way there's no, hey, you know, it used to be our speaker system and our, uh, we thought it was broken in our high school, we were gonna invest fifty thousand dollars in that remodel, put a whole new speaker system in. And the sound guys came that were gonna do all this new installation to our soundboard and started moving some knobs, it's like. You've got a great system here, you've just got too many people messing with it, turning the knobs and thinking that this is how the base should be and this is how this should be. And so this just kind of, hey, if you need lighting in our theater, we'll provide someone to do it for you, we don't want you handling it, so that's.
What's trying to be, what's new, and then what's the delta in terms of what we're on before or not?
Yeah.
What's the change that we need to?
It, it just tried to really. Be more detailed as far as when you rent our facilities, just keep in mind, these are the restrictions.
Well, and it also, uh, we, we did hear, when I read it, when I reviewed it, it gives us, like, if we need it for something else in the district.
Mm-hmm.
We can just take it, cause sometimes those things happen, like. It, some field gets real or there's something, and now we gotta move people someplace.
Yeah.
And um.
We have hardships.
Yeah, yeah. Which would be unfortunate if you rented it, but I think if you tell them upfront.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Mm-hmm.
This is first reading.
Just first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve first uh, reading board policies for the may miscellaneous policies as presented.
Second.
Motion by Losco, second by. I was, I had my head down, like, I heard the voice, I'm like, I couldn't tell who came from, sorry.
That's right.
Any other questions, discussions? Hearing done, all the, how did I say that?
I don't know.
Close. Motion carries now. I'll tell me to take a look at the base policy again before next month, uh, to, to get my head that way. You're right, that last one was a lot of loose stuffs. Um, the next thing on our agenda here is.
Opening and considering bills, and Tim Oswalt is on.
Yep. Tim, you wanna, I think you've got a sheet of paper in front of you guys, that's what we're gonna.
I did, Tim, I gave everybody a copy so they could see it instead of trying to look at the presentation on the wall.
Sure, great, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we did have bids this morning um, at ten AM, and what you have in front of you is the summary of the bids, and I'll, I'll walk through the summary first and then we'll come back to the bids themselves. So, um, there were eight bids submitted. Um, the lowest interest cost bid came from Robert Baird. Um, if you'll stretch your memory, that's the same firm that underwrote the bonds that we sold last year. Um, and Baird's a meaningful bidder on, in Iowa and around the Midwest. Interest rates that they uh, quoted, you can see they're all, they're all, they're all four percent interest rates, I'll come back to that. The average interest rate, or it's colored in blue there, the true interest rate was a three ninety four. Now, from there, if you scan down to the second place bidder, Northland, you'll see a rate of three ninety six. And then over to the right, to Davidson, the third place bid, you'll see three ninety eight, so we're talking about, you know. Two one hundredths of a percent difference from one to two and another two one hundredths from second to third place. Go from third down then to fourth place and you, you stretch it out to four one hundredths of a percent difference, the four oh three. Then over to B O K's bid at a four oh four, one one hundredth of a percent. And if you scan all the way down to the bottom, you know, Key Bank at a four thirteen, and we're talking about, um. Let's see, nineteen one hundredths of a percent from the lowest bid to the highest bid. And um, that's a very typical. Um, scenario, you don't have, you know, one bidder that's an outlier, good or bad, you have bids that are in a very orderly progression from one to the other. So you'll see on the, if you go back up to Baird, you'll see on the right side, there's this as resized statistics, and then they're kind of shaded yellow there. We have to reserve the right to change the payment schedule since we don't know exactly how the bidder will bid. Uh, we have a reasonable guess as to how they bid, but we don't know exactly, and so in order to keep the two seventy, I'm sorry, the four oh five tax rate. And also try and protect your ability to sell next year's bonds to complete this list of projects. Um, we have to save the ability to change the payment schedule after we have their bids, and we did a couple of minor changes. We did not change the amount of the issue, it remains at nine million nine hundred ninety five thousand. But we made a couple of changes in the payment schedule, and the end result is the true interest rate went from three ninety four to three ninety four. So, uh, really very modest changes. So, um, back up to uh, to Baird's bid itself. Interest rates, as I noted, are four percent in each of the year, but if you look at the next column to the right, you'll see the reoffering yield. So in the, for example, in the twenty twenty five maturity, the district will pay four percent for one year from June of twenty four to June of twenty five. The investor will earn an effective interest rate of a three point four five percent. And they are paying the district one hundred point five one one percent of face value. Um, and if you scan up and down, you'll see a similar relationship. Kind of throughout the sked, scale, the investors are earning a rate lower than four percent. And the way that that happens is they pay a premium to the school district. Um, of a, you know, some number, the twenty thirty four maturity is almost a hundred and six percent of face. Um, of a, you know, some number, the twenty thirty-four maturity is almost a hundred and six percent of face value. And then it works its way down till you get out to the twenty forty-four maturity where you're just a hair over a hundred percent of face value. All of that adds up to Baird is going to pay this district ten million sixty-two thousand. Well, as, as of, as revised, ten million sixty-three thousand. Eh, for nine million nine hundred ninety-five thousand of bonds. And so this is, if you remember, when you bought a house and the mortgage broker said, would you like to pay a point to buy the rate down? That's a math calculation, the ru- if you can buy a rate down, you can sell a point and buy a rate up, and that's what the bidders are doing. Is they're paying you above face value to buy the rate up. And if you scan up and down and you look at each of the bids, you can see every single one of the bidder had the same, bidders had the same strategy. There, they all quoted four percent interest rates. So that is what the market's expecting in terms of interest rate. The deviation in the, you know, from first to second to third to fourth to fifth bid then is in the combination of the reoffering yields themselves. And the fees the underwriters charging the district to, to do their, do their work. I have a couple other things, but let me pause for a minute, and do you have questions you want me to answer there? Okay.
Um, oh, always Kevin, sorry. I, I don't see the reoffering yield on the other bidders, just the beer.
Good, that's correct, we didn't show all the others, just showed the Baird, um, yields to.
That's how they, so they're, so if I, I wanna repeat back, so I can make sure I understand, so they're, they're giving us more money to. And then the reoffering then lowers the interest rate as a result of giving us more money?
You got it, yeah.
Oh. Interesting, didn't know how that works.
And we, so we allow, we allow that, you know, we don't wanna take away the bidders' all of their strategies.
Sure.
So we allow them that, but we wouldn't want a bidder, for example, to bid, uh, you know, like an eight percent interest rate in a three percent market. Um, because that would skew your tax levies. So we do put parameters on the bidding. Range, and the parameter we used for this one is that no interest rate could be more than two percent higher than any other interest rate. So they had to live within a range.
And, and so Baird, in essence, then. Came in at a higher because they had, they're, they're willing to pay us more on top of our asking. Our dollar figure.
Yep.
And low, and they had a lower. Reoffering yield, everybody else did the same thing, but the, they came in lower, which caused them to be. The best winning bidder.
Correct, yeah, you understand it. If you scan down, look at, you go Baird is ten million sixty-two thousand. Northland is ten million thirty-seven thousand. Davidson is ten million ten thousand.
Yes, that's what I was seeing, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, the paperwork references not to exceed ten million. Um, you're selling nine million nine hundred ninety-five thousand. And I wanted to answer the question, why are we doing that, and, um, Moody's, your rating agency. Um, their fees go up. When you cross, when you go from nine million nine ninety-five to ten million. The fee goes up seven thousand dollars. So if you're thinking through that math, if we were gonna sell ten million of bonds. The fee would be X, it might, it'd be seven thousand more than if you sell nine million nine ninety-five of bonds, so. You can see why I defaulted to a reducing the amount, cause it just doesn't make sense in line with their fee. You'll eventually sell the rest of the bonds you've, you've authorized on, but I don't feel a need to pay them seven thousand to borrow five.
Smart.
So. Um, so we did have the bids, as I mentioned, at ten, and we had a, uh, mix up or an issue with the technology, and I wanna make sure the board understands it. Um, we s- I set up a Teams. Call with, uh, Davis and Chris and Pat and myself. Um, to, so you could see the bids, since they're all electronically submitted. Um. And Davis and Chris were not able to get into the site, and I don't know if that's because I don't know how to operate Teams. Or if Teams wasn't letting them in, um. But nonetheless, Davis and Chris were both trying to get in and couldn't get in, Pat was in the site and was able to see everything, and so. Um. The, I discussed with your bond lawyer. Uh, and she modified the proceedings to mo- to note that Davis and Chris were not able to. To join and that it was just Pat and I that were. Uh, in that discussion, and so the minutes should reflect that the. You know, the two officers weren't able to join. Um, and I thought I'd pause and see if you have any questions about that.
Oh. What is it, is that impactful in any way?
It just, you know, I, go ahead.
Wait, I think. Tim?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh.
So the statute requires that sealed bids be received, but it doesn't really specify. To whom? And so the, the norm would be that, you know, Chris and her peers and Davis and his peers would be present.
Hmm.
Um, and, you know, so this is a little bit out of the norm, but it's, it's not clear to me that it's, there's a problem with the statute. Um, and since your lawyer didn't seem to have an issue with it. Um, and she just modified the paperwork accordingly, um, I don't know that I think you have an issue there, I just wanna make sure that. You understood that they tried, and either I couldn't operate the system or the system wasn't letting them get in.
Okay.
Yep, and there's just a mismatch, if it was printed on the agenda and what's on the paperwork that we're gonna sign tonight, so that's the.
Correct.
That's the biggest thing is that.
I reloaded the actual.
Oh, no, I, I mean, on the, the formal agenda where it's, it's there, cause that's published twenty-four hours in advance.
Yes, correct, yep.
Correct, it's attached.
Correct, yes.
Stuff on the agenda.
And my minutes will reflect the correct as well.
All those people who.
Yep, correct.
Like, that's the biggest impact is that we planned a group and we've set an agenda that it doesn't.
Yes.
Exactly match.
Yep.
Any other questions on the opening of the day? I think then we moved, cause there's no action on that, do we have to do anything?
Yes, we have to experiment. You guys, um, Tim, am I correct, they have to just motion that you have given the information and we have given the board the recommendation?
See, I don't know that you have to do anything, but I, I think that's.
Lawyer, yeah, the lawyer gave me two forms that I, that, one of them, I, Pat has to sign it, and then I have to sign off that Pat signed it. That they received the information, and then we go to the next step of them accepting the recommendation.
Correct.
And this one isn't roll call, this is just, okay, you guys have given us the bid.
We have to make a motion to.
Make, make.
That we accepted.
Yes.
Knowledge received.
Yep.
Yeah.
To make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the consideration of the sealed bills opened and reviewed by the superintendent of school secretary.
Yep, just read that, yeah, read that last part off, read a little bit of it.
Reviewed and received.
Not to exceed, yep, not to exceed ten million.
Not to exceed ten million dollars, general obligations, school bond, series twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Second. Motion by local, second by Curtis.
Okay, perfect.
All in favor, see if I by saying aye.
Aye.
I, both. Motion for the announcement, we are now moving on to the consideration of the sealed bids.
Can you pull that up, Josh, cause there's certain language they have to use.
I think, I think it's just moving the resolution directly to sale nine nine five. Ponds right there, right?
Keep. That one, yeah. Yep, just scroll down a little bit. Keep going. Yep, yep. Keep going. Right there, okay. Yep.
Motion to approve the resolution directing the sale of nine million nine hundred ninety-five thousand general obligations, school bond, series twenty twenty-four. As, as, as recommended by our folks. Yes, motion by Alaska, second by local. Local.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rockholtz.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Alaska.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yep.
It just brought a lot of.
And then scroll down and Tim has to say resolution, yeah, yes, mm hmm. I think you have to declare it, or maybe.
If I do.
Okay, thank you.
President declares the resolution adopted. The president declared the resolution directly to sale of nine million nine hundred eighty-five thousand general obligations, school bond, series twenty-four, to be adopted. I have also the magic words.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye, Tim.
Bye.
And I figure I'll sign this, later, if I need to play the notary again. Um, K twelve, activity fees twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we had some questions last month, and we. Sent questions to Davis, and Davis has answered to those questions, and so now we're back in discussion on the activity fees for K two twelve. And Bree was going to gather some information over colleagues in high school. We'll start with Bree.
Okay, um. I think at, like, bigger, uh, front time people, at bigger events, like football games, it won't really affect that much admission, because. Most people already don't know, though it's felt that doesn't have a lot of student involvement currently, it would affect it, if that makes sense.
Mm hmm.
For being example that.
Like, um, like, like the student section at football games versus basketball games, especially soccer games.
Sure.
Extremely noticeable.
Sure.
Things like that.
The hard part is some of these seasons, there's so much going on right now.
Yes.
But, you know.
Well, and it's also time to get. Sure, but, yeah, you know, for, on a Friday and all that.
Hmm.
You know, it's, it's soccer match, maybe Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's Sunday.
Tuesday, Friday.
Yeah.
For boys at least.
Yeah. But some of the roads here is. If these, if they got it for free, they'd be more likely to go to some of these.
That they're not.
They're not going to right now, but they're not holding up, fans are wanting to go with a. Soccer game or a basketball game unless it's a big game. Versus this five home football games, which is more than.
Yeah.
It's already a big crowd. Davis.
Well, uh, yeah.
What you're the.
Don, Don helped a lot, um. We have. Four hundred and. Ninety high school students. In the high school, four ninety.
What does that say?
Four hundred ninety-two.
Yeah, that's what she, yeah.
Did I give you a sheet already?
You said.
Alright, cause I have it in mind. One thing, cause I pulled it off of what she gave me.
Okay.
It's somewhere around, there's four ninety-one, four ninety-two.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so a hundred. Hundred ninety-three, is that the number that did not have an activity pass?
Yes.
That sounds right.
Hundred ninety-three. So, Don, Don sent a survey to a hundred of those specific students. Forty-three of them responded. Um. So the questions that she sent them, two questions, how frequently do you attend activity events at Soul High School? Of the forty-three that responded. Twenty-six said frequently. Eleven said sometimes and six said rarely. So, and then if you had an activity passage, you attend more activity athletic type events than you currently do. Sixty-four percent or twenty-eight of the forty-three said they would. So, we're only working off forty-three students, so that's kind of a tough. Um, right now, uh. If we, I believe the number I got was just around seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, is the cost, so it wouldn't be, you know, out. And, um.
That'd be of the one ninety-three, right?
That would be.
Or that'd be the.
The four hundred.
Four ninety-two.
Yes, that would be all the students, we're going to get about seventy-five hundred dollars right now.
Then you did ask other districts, what do they do?
I get a response, uh, no, the, the ones that I did respond, um. Were no, they do not. So, but that was, I sent a survey out to the Walmart and only three responded, and they were, it was a no. I said, no, 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 they do not. Provide free admission.
Pat would kill it with the same, but seventy-five hundred dollars isn't that much?
So, that's how many passes to give each kid a pass?
Excellent.
I suppose, so it's fifteen bucks a day.
Yeah. Now, yeah, we before going to the revenue, does that account for the ones that are, are repaid for as part of family passes?
That, that, that's why it's, that's why it's equated, because it's, it's grouped in with family passes too.
I mean, you can drive for a year and see it. What the tone is, I mean, this. What's your thoughts, what's your recommendation?
The only hard part would be, I mean, I'm all for even a three, it's just, once you make a three, it's really hard to go back, because.
Well, that, right. It's a good idea, I are. If you're gonna give something, it's gonna be hard to take away, so if you try to forget it, just know that.
Right. We're gonna be talking about breakfast again.
Right.
You know, we're gonna do that again, though, we've got the funds, but again, after three, now, now we're gonna go into year three, so after year five or six. How do you, how do you go?
Because it's always been talked about, like. The cost barrier, that is truly a pro- you know, truly an issue as to why. The fifty dollar fee is. It's being used, we could do things with lunch, those just automatically get them to.
Yeah, that's, that sounds reasonable to me, I mean, we could always have a, a, a request process. You know, we, so, uh.
Yeah, so we could approve, so in a sense, we could just proceed so that we're not holding up any registration and just approve the fees. And then.
Direct administration to come up and.
Administration.
Request process. Or an automatic free review, much possible, or bold combination.
I would love to do, cause I, the only thing about it is I just don't know how many, it's because they just don't want an activity pass, or it's because they cannot. Like, that's just not in their budget, like, they just don't know.
Yeah.
And, and then, then if we did.
But apparently.
You know, numbers back then, we had two hundred people ask for. Well, okay, this is different, you know, I think that was pretty.
We could put it as part of the registration. Process to, to like. If you're interested in receiving this.
Or if you're.
Or something, worded in a way that captures the information.
They could, they could advertise it within the high school.
Yeah.
To start the year too, the year through.
And aren't we already required, so you request, with, with a lot of these, if, if somebody's on free, call price for free reviews slugs, we're required to make fees if they're on. Free lunch and we're required to give them a discount if they're on, on reviews, right?
For registration and, and passing we do also.
Activity, yearbook, all those extras would not be under that umbrella. We could, we could practice that.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Correct.
We'll just keep things as is.
Make sure we can advertise that, and what, there's a different avenue if you can't afford, unless they can't afford it, it's on the, like, I'm not getting those directions involved with the plan. Do you need financial assistance there?
I'll make motion to approve the K twelve activity fees for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year with, um, don't even say anything about the.
Yeah.
So with the notion that we'll ask the, uh. Administration to come up with a plan for those that can't afford it, give them a pathway to, to get a pass.
Second.
Perfect.
Motion by Alaska, second by Coons, um. Other discussion on the topic. The other point I didn't even touch on, and I mentioned with Davis, that came up about this, is the fact that. Chris mentioned at the last meeting that. We've stopped, we no longer give, we no longer receive.
I mean.
IDs, everybody, and so there's this, there is this whole other question that I think we have to address, which is. We're required to provide the mental health notices on the back of student IDs that we don't give to students. So. Uh, they have the emergency numbers and whatnot, so I think.
That is separate.
That's, it, it is, it is, but it came up as part of this topic, so I think. Um. I think I just wanna make the point that I think we still need a resolution to that, even though it's not part of this, it came up as part of this, we, we need to figure out how we're. What, what the rules are on how we're complying and how we're meeting the needs, the needs for our students there, so.
Is it just, you know, something that you did all students?
I think.
Such a good question.
What Chris said, it's supposed to be on the ID.
I don't know.
Legislation specifics, specifically. Legislation specifics, specifically says.
Where.
IDs, but.
I know that, that the, the people that make them for us, they're required, but I don't know if that's. Right, I don't, I don't have that answer, I don't know.
So that's like, actually, Davis.
Yeah.
You could stick it on schedules, because that's something everybody gets.
Yeah, but that's something they have all the time, so. Any other topics we wanna discuss here? We've done a motion of second, all's in favor of approving.
Aye, aye.
Right, I oppose. Motion here unanimously.
Do you need to make more launch cards or anything, then you can just do a swipe, that everybody just.
We have numbers that we just say and they.
That's what I thought. It's just exciting.
We did an elementary.
They could do, they could make them, we just don't, yeah.
I get clarification from our attorney.
Yeah.
No school we stop.
The interpretation of the law and what we're required to do.
Yeah. Um. So for material for FY twenty-four budget amendment, Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P M. And that should be a short one, that should be a short one, this is, this is the one that is the paper, this is the one that is the paper.
Yep.
Yep. Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the FY twenty-four budget amendment for Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. At five thirty P M. To resolve the accepting of both.
Second. Motion by local, second by feelings, any discussion? Hearing that all is embarrassing, if I say aye. Oppose, motion here unanimously, set special board meeting for Thursday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P M. Yeah. Says all, sorry. You're, you're thinking about the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. The five, yeah, twenty-four, five thirty P M, authorizing. Resolution, authorizing issuance, adoptance.
Mm-hmm.
All be done in Florida for a meeting that the. We don't know. I should, I mean, I'm always that, like, give years.
Um, what is this for? What exactly is this resolution for?
This is to finalize the, hold on here, this is to finalize the. Let me pull it out here just a second. Resolution authorizing issuance adopted, this came from the lawyer.
Yes, this is the final step in the bonds. I hope that, so it's gonna be short, awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just has to be separate.
Excited, make her life more faithful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe we can do it on teams.
There you go.
Again, as we've talked about this, the theory. Have a public meeting for these things, and theory, as long as Chris and I are here, Chris and I are here, the rest of you don't have to be here. We just have, we have to have somebody present in the location where the meeting is being held, and everybody else to be.
Call in.
Because there's no.
Um, yeah, so, yeah, for this one, it could, it could be all virtual other than.
Because I won't be here on the twenty-first. Even though I think that's.
That's all right. That's next.
Tuesday. You know, it's like, if you're gonna be doing like some sunglasses. So, you're a little umbrella.
So.
Oh, yes, yes, please.
I would like to motion to set the special board meeting for Thursday, May thirtieth. Twenty twenty-four, five thirty P M, resolution authorizing insurance adoption.
Thank you.
Motion by locals.
Second.
Second, I will, all in favor, see if I say aye.
Aye.
For this, motion here unanimously.
One more.
Next up is, we want to, we, we asked about, we're going on this, uh, boards, the council joint meeting. Uh, they proposed a couple of dates, uh, and then they, their preferences from Wednesday, June nineteenth, which is the day before our. So I have a question, who all is around that day over there? I should be here, it's five o'clock, yeah.
So I'd like.
It'll be, it's a Wednesday, so. I should be here.
Go ahead, we're, I'm listening.
I'd like to make a motion to set the, I'm gonna give it this. Board and city joint council meeting for Wednesday, June nineteen, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P M at the city hall.
About five, are you?
Five P M.
Oh, true, I would thought I was really get five o'clock P M, excuse me, five o'clock P M at the city hall.
Thank you.
Second. Motion by local, second by Coons, I may or may not be here, that is the thing on the summer. And so.
Have fun.
I.
I expect.
Generally, the week I, I don't, it's generally the one I don't, the board meeting, because you're. Top down, but I may come down from one of the two, but I know I wouldn't have both of them, so. Especially, obviously, I didn't say I did, but. For that maybe.
The Wednesday meeting will be more exciting than the Thursday.
It's a, it's a work session, so there's not a, so.
I mean, just provide topics, what we're talking about, so for the topics, generally, we.
Provide topics to Davis that we wanna talk about.
Good.
Uh, and then the board or the city council provides topics to Cammy, they hash it out, and then. We then work to have a parallel agenda, so Chris will, Chris will work with Davis and I to. Make sure the topics we want are on there, because it's a work session, so they go action items, and so it's sharing work session discussing issues of mutual. Yeah.
Plus, I'm gonna have to do with like.
Yeah.
Roads and buildings and future plans.
Yeah. And, you know, general.
Future.
And you remember, sometimes, sometimes we just take turns, it's like, you know, the city will go on, and these are the powers that will, not a lot of them just. And so there's nothing. I just wanna make sure that we have things really tight, but I also don't want to find quite heavy topics pop up for years, and so. Uh, so I think if we've got topics, if you've got topics you wanna share and discuss. But, Davis and I know, and Chris know, to make sure that they are on our list, and, uh. Obviously, we've got, we've got general topics that we care about, um. Like, what, for a longer plan, he said, we're gonna work, and city growth is always one of the topics, and then, uh. They obviously care about what we're doing, so. Uh, we have a motion to approve June nineteen, twenty twenty-four, five thirty, city hall, uh, for. Joint meeting slash work session.
I'll start it.
We already have a motion of second too late, um. You're, all in favor, see if I say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion here unanimously.
Do I need to be at that or just for instance?
You can be, you're welcome with either one, you don't have to be at the joint meeting.
I know, it's so much.
It is a lot of fun.
The city one might be a little more interesting.
Yeah, that.
Yes. Yeah, the other, you got that one, that one is, that made a live stream there as well, so if you wanna listen to it. It was one, and so. And otherwise, we can just talk to Chris while we're happening, but up there.
Oh, wow.
Um. It's changing, gonna go there soon, yeah.
Yeah. All she's gotta do is motion.
We're running, you were supposed to watch the I, oh.
Yep.
The Icat safety and security, is that the, is that the upcoming conference, is that online?
It's online.
Yeah.
Yep, that's a big topic for Davis and Josh, uh, for teachers. So I thought, and so you've already listened to it once, but I thought it's a good refresh. Yep, yep, and we're all at our points and all that good stuff, but I try to come up with creative things for you guys to just refresh your memories, thanks, Chris.
That's, that's good, I think, uh, the other thing, since we've got safety on that, that reminds us that, uh, one of our summer meetings will. Go into a closed session to review the safety plan.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes, so I fear unless we're all gonna be here, and we can go into closed sessions, we're authorized to be one here, and so we can go in and do this and.
Yeah, yeah.
Can, can tell you the stuff, you know, what types are. Um. Talking points, Bree.
The home, lots of things that we openly discussed, one overs and all that, so that's fun.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Please, while I'm having a go.
So, we didn't discuss it here, but I know, I'm pretty sure Dan was present. And David's got an email from me, and I did. I was blown away with excitement for the middle school concert that took place on Tuesday. Those kids' voices were phenomenal, it was a night and day difference from what I saw last year to this year. And I'm just so proud of what she's done this year, look at me, in the motion, I'm just so excited.
Yeah, awesome.
Well, it's, it's music. Learning and, and.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, yeah, the way that we have the school musical, is that we're talking about doing that every other year and.
That's a really good question, I don't know, we haven't, I guess, haven't approached that subject with her.
We have been doing every other year, and it's been a couple of years now.
Yes, that's it.
It's a word bringer, just the.
Say that again.
Yeah, bring her in, for a turn, just a recogizer, just. Just said, board notes, talk to you, and just leave it at that.
Well, we'll, we'll give a little bit.
Right, you're in here, what? Well, and I know because. There, you know, there was some numbers that shifted, and you can see that, the eighth graders had a smaller crowd. In terms of who actually were participating or required, that has nothing to do with the quality of music that was happening, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's a real, it was a sports arena to hell, you know?
Um, well, again, lots of good things, I think. The thing tonight that was exciting to me was the outdoor learning stuff that Seth was doing, because kids got to go outside, move around. And see how all the things they are learning can apply. In ways that they probably didn't think of, and seeing a kid use a compass.
Yeah.
Maybe they're pretty happy, actually, if they learn how to do something, and that, but just all the different things. Because sometimes there's a big disconnect between. What you're doing in a classroom and just being out in nature, you can learn a lot of things, so. That's exciting to me, I think that's fun that they're doing that at the end of the school year, so.
Um.
Just thought I'd talk to my head. Is that I, the first thing to.